All right. Good evening, folks. Welcome to Thursday, July 7, 2022, Town of Bowling Green July Council Meeting. I'd like to call to order. If I can have everybody please rise and face the flag and repeat. Thank you. Okay. We have no delegations, but we have public comments. I think we have a person that would like to speak at public comments. If you do, this is your time. Please come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of council. My name is Anne Neil Cosby. I'm a land use attorney at Wire Gill, and I am representing Northview Properties LLC. And I'm speaking tonight based on a request that we have for reconsideration of this council's denial of their rezoning application that occurred on June 2. And based on the, you know, the comments from that meeting and the minutes, I think one of the criteria that was really driving that denial were based on water supply issues. And I know DEQ was here. There were other issues, but that was certainly a primary driver. And so the case was denied. We have subsequently had conversations with DEQ and have confirmed, yes, they do have the concerns that they shared with this council. But we asked, would they be open to our, if this decision were reconsidered and brought back to the table, brought back before council, that we could work with DEQ and try to come up with some alternative for this project, you know, and holistically work with, you know, with your county attorney and your, and with Allison in the work that she's doing on water supply. And so we'd like to be a part of that conversation. We'd like to be a resource. Northview would put, you know, its resources and professionals to work, and that would benefit overall the town, you know? So you would have your own staff, but, you know, we would be available and working in tandem with them, you know, with a view towards ultimately the water supply issue being discussed with a final action on the rezoning, if you were inclined to reconsider that. So we, we hope that you might consider. We have a potential motion that, that we hope that you'll consider so that we can bring this application at least back. Let it just indefinitely stay before you let us work. Try to figure out some alternative for water supply that makes sense to you and hopefully is helpful to everybody. And then potentially it would be, you know, an opportunity to have smart growth, a protection of water resources, and really just be a benefit to the town. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. And again, all we're asking is a reconsideration. Bring the matter back. Let it stay. Let us help. Let us all work together towards smart growth. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
What if there is no solution for the water?
If there is no solution to the water, then the application could be denied on motion if it were brought forth. Ultimately, it remains wholly within council's discretion. So if there's no fix that the council is satisfied with, it can be denied just as it was before. It's just an opportunity to have additional time to address the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would wish to speak at this time? Please come up, state your name and address. All right, one of you come on. I don't care which one.
Good evening.
I'm sorry. Hang on. Hang on one second. I'll tell you what, we'll do it after this.
Good evening. My name is Yvette Harvey. I just moved last year to the Maury Heights section, and my concern is the water increase 15%. I'm trying to understand why the increase is so high. And basically, we are getting new people in all the time. So why is it going up instead of down?
All right. I can direct you to the town manager to call her, and she'll be glad to discuss that with you at a later date.
Would you like for me to just give a very brief?
If you would like to.
Basically, what happened is that the town had to do things to repair and restore the water system. And we borrowed money at a low interest rate. And part of that requirement was that the town raise its rates to market rates for the water that it charges. And the rates probably should have been increased over time, and they weren't. And so now I think it feels like a much larger increase. But the town manager can give you more details on that.
And who is the town manager?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Bonnie. I seen you getting up. Come on. No, we're fine. I'm gonna do it after we close this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to stand here tonight before you. And I would like to address trash again. Y'all have heard me mention this before. These people are unsatisfactory. I see you doing a rate increase. I don't care if it's a half a penny, and y'all's is 47 cents. The service is I should be getting my trash picked up twice a week. I have maggots in my trash during this hot weather. I cannot stand it. And in the past, I have asked to not take the trash pickup because I can come right out my door and put it in the back of my truck and go straight to the dump. My husband Clyde and I are hardly able to roll them heavy buckets out to the street and get them back to the back of the house. We're not able. I'm sorry, I'm not 21 years old anymore. I would really appreciate not having to deal with this trash situation at all. Number one. Number two. I understand y'all had a meeting June 16. About your budget. Did y'all pass your budget on June 16 for the new year, for the coming year? Did you address anything about taxes in your new budget as a result of the personal property increase, which will cause taxes to go up, which you should have equalized the rate some or at least discussed the rate? And/or the county did away with a $30 fee per car? Did y'all address that issue too? To do away with that? So I'm just curious, what did you do about taxes in your new year budget? And number three. The town needs to study your ordinances. Y'all need to do a lot of ordinance study. And I would gladly sit down and listen to your studies when you do them, especially buildings, surroundings, the historic integrity of the town. We're losing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Anybody else wish to speak at public comment? Seeing nobody else coming forward. I'd like to close public comments. One issue that we need to address before we move on. I forgot Deborah Howard is on Zoom. So I need to have somebody make a motion to accept her being on Zoom. But go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Deborah, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Where are you participating from? And what is the reason that you need to participate electronically? Is it a personal reason or medical?
Um, it is personal. I'm on vacation.
Okay. If you could just briefly outline the nature of the personal reason and just indicate where you're participating from, we need to include that in the minutes.
Sure, yes. I'm in North Carolina on vacation.
And so, Mr. Mayor, if there's a motion to allow her to participate?
Right. I need a motion to allow her to participate, please.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Got it first by Jeff, got a second by Randy. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All right, here, none, motion passes in favor. Welcome, Deborah. I hope you're enjoying your vacation. All right.
Thank you.
Next item. We had the, we had the young lady speak, the attorney. And this is not, was not on the agenda for tonight. So I would like to see if somebody would like to make a motion to present this resolution for, to defer indefinitely, to give them time to work with us on this water situation?
I make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
And that motion is to what, sir?
To go ahead and let them have time.
Accept this resolution?
Accept this and then give them time to help us work trying to find a solution to this problem. It was Deborah and I that was talking last week, our last meeting, and I was kind of voiceless about it. But Deborah and I both agreed at that time that we need to do something as far as getting somebody out here to do our own part instead of just throwing this by the side.
Okay.
So I think with their, with their proposal, what they're trying to do, and they're going to help us do that at some of their expense, I think it's a great idea. And see what we can come up with to resolve this issue, once and for all.
And we need a second.
Now I need a second for the motion that Randy has just brought forth to add this resolution to our agenda.
I will second this, but I do feel like I need a little more clarity exactly as, if I'm understanding correctly, this is mainly so that we can rehear more evidence into why we?
Yes, I can, I can, I can read the resolution. We have, okay. We have a second, so we'll now go on discussions. I will read the resolution so you can hear it, Deborah. It says, "Resolution to Consider Northview Rezoning. Whereas on June 2, 2022, the Bowling Green Town Council Denied Rezoning RZS 2021-025 Filed by Northview Properties LLC. And council denied of the rezoning was based on reasons including, but not limited to, concerns regarding the capacity of the town's water supply and the, and specify, and speci-, yeah, the town's ability to provide water to serve new development. And council has recognized that responsibility grows as possible with proper planning, cooperative problem solving, and smart development. And reckon, and reconsideration of the denial of Northview's rezoning requests so that the application may be reviewed and in tandem with the cooperancy, comprehensive elevation of the ability of the town's water supply to serve existing and future residents and commercial development in a responsible request. Now that, now therefore be it resolved that the council reconsider the denial of rezoning RZS 2021-025 on June 2, 2022, and that the rezoning application be placed back before council for reconsideration. Be it further resolved that the entire rezoning application will only be considered in the event that reasonable measures are available for the town water supply as determined by the council to serve existing and future residential and commercial development. And that rezoning RZS 2021-025 be deferred indefinitely." So I have a first and a-
I, I guess, I want, I do have some questions. So yes, if this is about getting another, giving us some time and to reconsider some new information, that is where I am with this. Yes, the water is still a big issue. I guess my question to the attorney that came with Northview is, or maybe Andrea, you can answer this. Are there timeframes on this that, I mean, what, what? I don't, we've never done this before. So I'm not sure. I mean, because I am totally in support of hearing more about what can we really do to work together. But I don't, a lot of people had water issue. But that does not, I mean, are we like putting this, if we, if we solve water issues, it's a go? Because that's not what my intention here is. My intention is to give more time for new information, so.
And Deborah, there-
Andrea, can you speak to that?
Yes. There are time issues, but it is possible at this point for us to defer it indefinitely before we would have to absolutely make a decision on it. And I would anticipate that within the next 90 days, we would have an answer from DEQ on the water issue. Ms. Cosby, do you have any sense of the timeframe? But I would think 90 days, we might know how this is going to go.
We will get moving as quickly as we can. As I said, we have already conducted initial outreach with DEQ, and so we're aware of the issues and ready to move forward. So I would say in all due haste. And, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion to add this to the agenda. I got a first and a second. Do we have any other discussions on this before I take a vote?
I believe the motion was actually phrased to accept the resolution as presented, not to talk about it, if I heard Randy correctly.
What was it?
Yes, but you can have the-
Is there a copy of this that somebody has? Because I do not have a copy. Okay.
So all right. Is the motion to adopt it? Or because I asked for a motion to add it to the agenda, so.
I know you asked for the motion on- The way he worded it, you want to clarify?
I'm sorry. I want this to go through. I want us to be able to have more time here.
So your motion was to adopt this resolution?
Adopt this resolution, not to give it the time to-
Okay. All right, okay. So we are, we are in discussion.
Technically, the motion should be to add it to the agenda. And then when it's, when we come to it on the agenda, then to vote up or down whether or not to approve the resolution.
Correct. So you want to, you want to reframe, rephrase that just a little bit? Just to add it, like I was asking? Just, just to add it to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add this resolution to the agenda of what they brought forth tonight.
And is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a second by Deborah. All right. We were having some discussions. I'm looking, if we, if we vote on this and we add it in, I'm looking to add it into line item number nine, I guess. We'll add it down at the bottom. Any other discussion before a call for a vote?
Most of my discussion would revolve around actually passing it, so I will hold it if it gets to there.
Okay. All right. Arthur, start with you on a vote.
And the question is whether or not to add it to the agenda.
Right.
Yay.
Okay. Arthur? I mean, right?
Yes.
Valerie?
No.
Jean?
No.
Deborah?
Yes.
All right, got four yeses and two no's. So it is added to item number nine on the agenda. All right, moving on. Members' comments. I know we have some members that would like to say something. This is your opportunity.
I was trying to go left. I can start if you like, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to maybe discuss at the town council level and for the public. I know that there were some concerns that I had seen over the trash pickup. And from what I had gathered out of it, we had signed a contract, I believe it was last year, with Shiftlet's Waste Services to provide that service to the town of Bowling Green. And my understanding is that that company has now been bought out by GFL. So I guess a question that I have is, at that time, since they absorbed or bought out Shiftlet's Waste Service, that we had a contract in place, is it at a point that we need to revisit that contract? Or does the new company that bought them automatically pick up the contract that was already in existence, even though it's a different business? I know that there's been concerns from the citizens of the town. And I think that if it's at a opportunity that we can revisit that contract and maybe let that new company know our expectations because we have never talked to them, is my understanding, so.
I'll be happy to work with the town manager on that.
Sure. I just want to get it out there and know what I, what I know and pass it along to the fellow council members and everybody. Thank you.
Anybody else? Jean?
No.
Okay. Deborah, you want to go ahead?
Yes. Arthur, I deal with the same company in Fredericksburg at my other job. And I can tell you that the contracts went through automatically. If you were already on the service, they continued with that. They have an office in Fredericksburg. I have spent hours on the phone, even from my, in Fredericksburg, trying to get them just to pick up the phone there. They have had huge mergers into the company. So if anybody can actually talk to a person, the best way is actually to go visit them. So there, it's not going to be an easy thing to resolve through the company right now. And there's not a lot of options. They have bought out just about everybody that can buy out in the trash industry. So I would recommend starting your own. We need that.
I guess, my, my question is specifically to us and if the contract stated that they were to sell out, if there was any verbiage in there that it would need to be reconsidered or at that time, a new contract signed? I mean, we had a contract in place with Shiftlet's, and my understanding is that they're no longer in business. Whether they were bought out or merged or whatever happened, I think it's probably pertinent to revisit that.
Yeah, the, this has been brought up in our staff meetings on Mondays. And Allison and I are going to go over the contract, and we're going to call them and try to discuss some issues with them and find out, especially the fact that they're supposed to be recycled and trash. But is that spelled out in the contract? That they'll separate it, two trucks, you know? If that's the case, we're only doing one. So why are we paying for two? And plus the rate increase? So there's some things we got to do to go over the contract and get with them. So that is on our radar. Within, either by tomorrow or next week, we will sit down and go over and get with them. But that is a good.
Mr. Mayor, while we're on the trash, that was one of the points that I wanted to bring up tonight. We've got a lot of new people moving in town. And I'm not too sure if they know what the trash laws are as far as what they pick up. It's got to be in a container. And we got new people putting stuff out on the curb, and the trash company is not picking it up, and it's still laying there. They don't know any different. So I know there's a place over in Maury Avenue. It's been sitting there for almost three weeks because it's not in a container. And the trash people will not pick it up unless it's in a container. So we need to maybe educate the new people that move in when they come in and get water, that if they have trash, it's going to have to be put in a container. If it's too big, then they're going to have to dispose of it somehow at their expense.
I will work on that. Thank you for the, for the input and the idea. That's a good idea. All right, anybody else? Oh, Jeff takes over?
Okay.
All right, Jeff.
Yeah. Thanks for coming out, citizens and attorneys. You weren't by yourself this time, Bonnie. Another citizen came out as well. So nice to see more, more people showing up with their concerns. And I do think that the town manager will explain the water issue to you, ma'am. Yeah, you're correct, Bonnie, that, yeah, the, the taxes, they stayed the same in the budget, but because of lack of equalization, yes, some people be paying more. The only increase on, on paper like that was the 15% for the water. But yeah, any other clarification stuff? If you have a line item you have a problem with, you know, we could talk about. But yeah, that's the way that that was. Other, we didn't increase, and we don't plan to increase next year, hopefully, but we'll see how things go. I did want to give out a little bit of thanks to the admin staff that came in here on the Fourth of July to make sure the packets got out on time. Thanks a lot for that. And, you know, I want to thank the Planning Commission for letting me keep coming to their missions and kind of give my two cents and help them when I can on some of the stuff that they're doing. I've always been very partial to working with them. I, for myself, I have been spending many hours digging into this water issue that we're facing. And at some point, I, you know, will give you all the delus of the information that I found out. That may or may not come into play later in the meeting tonight. That's all I got for now. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else before we move on to staff report and presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I got a few more items here. Down on the corner of Anderson Avenue and brought us just up a little ways toward my house, towards the nursing home, there is a large sinkhole coming in by the storm sewer. You can actually see down in the hole. The ground is starting to fall in. The sidewalk is starting to lower itself. We need to get somebody out there to have a, take a look at that. There's a hole now where somebody could actually, whole leg, my whole leg could fit in the hole. And it's sinking, so the sidewalk's sinking. How, we need to find out the extent of it. Is it going underneath the road? Because the road is cracking. There's like three major cracks in the road right there as well. So is Anderson Avenue starting to sink in with this hole? But we need to, we need to have somebody look at that. Another thing is the sidewalk repair. We've talked about this in the past. There's a lot of uneven sidewalks out there. For instance, and I'm going to use Bonnie as an example. She was in front of our store the other day, and we have a section of the sidewalk that is about an inch and a quarter higher than the other section. She tripped on that the other day and almost fell. So that's just one of the places. Maury Avenue is full of sidewalk issues. And we need to have somebody maybe address that, go around and look at everything, what we can do to fix that, what it's going to take to fix it, get some quotes or whatever. But it's going to have to be addressed because if we, if we don't, we could have a worse situation. It's going to cost us more money down the road and possible lawsuits. Another item I wanted to bring up tonight is these vacant lots. And some of the lots that ain't vacant, the grass is almost up to my waist. There are snakes coming out on the sidewalk during the daytime to sun themselves because they're a cold-blooded animal. And we have a, we have, I believe, an ordinance about people not taking care of their yards. Who is, who's addressing that? And why aren't we enforcing that?
Do you have a list of addresses?
I know one right now is down on Maury Avenue, by, almost on Maury and Anderson Avenue. That's the biggest one. There's one, or it's not Maury. What is it? Milford is, what is what goes by the-
Okay.
Talking about it, Milford and Martin.
Mil, yeah, Milford and Martin. But there's one on Maury Avenue that's a vacant lot. That's almost waist-high, too. And they have been told, you know, to take care of it, but they're still not doing it. And the residents that live next to it And the residents that live next to it have mentioned it to me about bringing it up in a meeting because they know there's an ordinance about it. They've been warned, but they still do nothing about it.
And so just for everyone's information, the town responds to these types of complaints on a complaint basis. And so if somebody will contact the main office, the town hall office, and indicate the address, then the town manager will have someone investigate it and we'll send them a letter. And if they don't remedy it, then we will make arrangements to have the grass cut.
And I received that complaint yesterday.
Oh, okay.
And one other thing, and I know it's kind of a sore subject, but we've talked about this before and it was resolved, you guys spent a lot of time on it, but it's about the rental of this hall. Have we've lost money on this? Lost revenue from coming in because we've raised our rates too high? I was seeing some stuff on Facebook the other day that you can rent a place much larger than this for almost half the price in Caroline County. So are we doing ourselves justice by raising rates? I know we need repairs. I know it costs more to clean it. But are we losing revenue because we went too high?
Well, we were losing revenue before.
We can look into that matter.
Before this.
Yeah.
I mean, the biggest thing is Caroline County Fair come out the other day on Facebook, plastered all over about high rate, high rates. And they've got a 20 by 50 billing or a 30 by 50 billing over there. And they'll rent the whole thing for half of what we're paying, or what we're charging here. And I've got, I've got the thing on my phone. I took a picture of it. I can send it to you. And you can see all the rates. They got several buildings over there that they'll rent. It's, they're all cheaper than here. And I know we've lost some from what people have told us that they're going elsewhere to do it because they just, they can't afford to do it here. And I'm not saying to lower our rates or do anything special, but we need to, we need to figure out if we're losing a lot of money, then, I don't know, what can we do about it? It's revenue. But if you ever lose the money before, but did we take it, did we take the level too high? I mean, I wasn't here a part of that, so I can't, I don't know. I wasn't, as far as the voting and all that stuff, I'm just going by what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing. And people are upset with it and not happy with it.
So the buildings that are in Caroline County at the fairgrounds, do they have kitchen, bathroom facilities?
Yeah. And I, like I said, I took a picture of that and I'll be more than happy to send it to you and everything that they've got. And everything that explains on.
This.
I think we're extremely fair in our cost here. I don't think it's just about the repairs, but the bulk of it is, this is a historic building. I'm not sure how many people with specific events want to be at the fairgrounds. I do know several other places here in Caroline County are charging for a smaller place, at least $1,000 to $1,500. So I think we are extremely in line with the surrounding area and what other rentals are charging. And for Facebook, I have found, unfortunately, some of those facts are not researched or people have challenges in what the town is doing.
I'm just bringing this forward from some of my people. And the only thing I'm saying is about what's on Facebook. It's the fairground put out a flyer with all their prices. So it's not that somebody said something to say something bad about the town. The fair is at, the fairgrounds is advertising these buildings to get people to come there. And I'm just saying, you know, people are going there. So that's all I wanted to bring up. I brought it up. I did what they asked me to do.
Well, this is, this is for members' comments. It's not actually for a debate session. It's for members to bring up stuff that they've done and seen and whatever. Complaints should be handled through the proper channels, through the public. We have it, we document it. And that's the only way we will follow up with stuff is through documentation coming in from the public. So it would be nice if people come to you and that's fine, but please direct them if they want it to get handled at a, at a good rate, to come in, fill out a report, give us a full description of what it is, and we will send the people out to address it and take a look at it. But some, some stuff that, you know, we need to, that's why we have work sessions. We can also bring it out into work sessions and stuff where we can discuss it even more. And anyhow, anybody else before we move on to staff reports?
Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to say something about the sidewalks.
Yes, sir. Go ahead and do it.
I've had much the same similar concerns. I've gone out there and taken pictures myself. I did have the chance to talk to one of the VDOT reps a couple of weeks ago. This is one of those things, you know, we've heard many times, it's up to VDOT, it's up to VDOT. I kind of asked about it, you know, because I asked like, well, what if, you know, like if I had a sidewalk, what if I wanted to fix it? You know, can I do that? Because at the end of the day, all the sidewalks are in the VDOT right of way. And they're the ones that are supposed to come fix it. There are some things that we can maybe do. It costs us. And the response that I got at the time was, if you have an issue, go online, you know, fill out the complaint referral form and, you know, they'll get to it when they get to it. If it's an emergency, they'll probably get there a little sooner. If you have somebody's phone number, you can call them directly, maybe get them even a little bit sooner than that. As far as trying to fix something yourself, funnily enough, depending on what that fix would entail, like if you have to get in the way of the right of way to do that fix, they require you to get a permit to do that. So you actually have to pay VDOT if you're going to fix some of your stuff, is what I was told, because you're going to be blocking traffic and you got to get a, you know, concrete mixer in there to do that. You know, we did, you know, do away with our sidewalk committee. But, you know, we could think about not remaking that, but, you know, putting on an agenda and discussion about, you know, maybe we want to allocate some funds to fixing some things ourselves, maybe want to tally up everything in the town. And, yeah, there's another point I was trying to make there. Now I'll just leave it at that. But, oh, sorry. You know, maybe we could put some sort of referral to the VDOT form on our own webpage for a person to refer a person to, to refer them to there. Because, you know, I imagine, like with many of the other complaint systems, the more that they get on the same subject, the more they might put eyes on it. That was all I had.
All right, thank you. Thank you all. All right, move on to staff reports. Public Works.
I, hello.
Deborah, you want to say something else?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I do. That's okay. I know, I don't have my face up there because, you know, on vacation, I have a good hair day, so sorry. So remember I'm here. But I just wanted to say, yes, Valerie, you were right. Randy, I know you've heard a lot of negativity about, but really honestly, they have run the whole rental thing for that building in it. And I think committee did a great job with what they did. And we have a lot more that we have to preserve here, including this is a building that's used for our meetings like this. It's just a lot more than just something set up at the fairground. So I am fine if people want to go somewhere else. And to me, this building is about preservation more than anything. So I concur that we need to stick with what we're doing and no reason to visit that. The main reason I wanted to speak up was, is there a way that we can, a way to study our traffic on Main Street? I am noticing, and maybe our police chief can speak to this coming up very shortly, that do not stop, we have crosswalks. And I'm very concerned about the businesses in town, the events that we have. People drive, race through. Of course, we know there's always that problem with speed, but they don't even stop crosswalks. And as I travel, I noticed that a lot of towns, they have signs of, there's a way that they do enforce people stopping at crosswalks. It also sometimes diverts traffic to other, they decide, instead of going through that little town and having to stop, I go another route. So I would like for us to start looking at options. And however we need to put that on the agenda, please do, because I really am concerned about safety on Main Street.
Mr. Mayor.
That's all.
Okay.
I did, I guess, want to let Deborah know that it seemed to me that VDOT did just run a traffic study because the equipment was out on Main Street, so.
Yeah, they did. I called them about it. And it's their five-year traffic studies that they do. And they do it just so that they have just the information and people asking for it or for projections down the road on projects or whatever. So, yeah, they did do their five-year study.
Well, let me rephrase them what I'm asking for. We need to slow, we need to, we need to do something to, to keep people from plowing through our walks when people are crosswalks. When people are standing there, they give no regard to that. That's what I'm asking for. I don't think that's going to show up in their studies. We have to slow people down at those crosswalks. And that's going to entail something physically there, something visual, because it's not happening. And I think that would help in a lot of ways, slow down traffic.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment, there are large signs now that light up to notify motorists that a pedestrian is entering the walkway.
Yeah.
I don't know what is involved in.
Let me, let me stop you there. We have discussed crosswalks with VDOT, they were blue in the face. VDOT would not let us put any signs in the road because their roads are not wide enough and they own it. They would not let us put any signs up on the sidewalks. So we have talked about repainting them things. We finally got them moved. So all we can do is keep trying to talk to VDOT. They won't let us do us, you know, us do anything. And if we can't warn people that crosswalk is coming up and to slow down, we can't go after them. So it's all up to VDOT and we will continue to talk with them, Deborah, about that. It has been an issue in the past and a concern of mine as well.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else before we move on now? Josh, Public Works, anybody have any questions for, for Josh on his report? No, I don't, don't see none.
I will say, we do have a meeting next month on the August 25th with the district engineer from VDOT for the area.
Right, and that's going to be with Kyle Bates. And he's the one that I talked to about the traffic study. Yeah, we do have a meeting about with him. We want to go over that smart scale program with him as well. Chief, Town Police Report, anybody have any questions from the chief's report?
I, I got a question, Mr. Mayor, on your last comment. Is that meeting, not for the chief, I'm sorry. You said that you had a meeting regarding the smart scale project with.
Yes, well, we're going to, yeah, we have a meeting with Kyle. And that's one of the things that I want to bring up to him is about, is about that program.
Is the rest of town council invited to that meeting? I'm just curious.
I would assume him, he just mentioned it, so I would assume they are.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know.
Because I, you said the 25th of July?
It's August 25th at 1:00. I mean, I, it's, well, it's 1:00 to 2:30. I mean, it's here at town hall. I don't, I guess anybody's.
I mean, I would like to attend because I met with him the first time, another engineers, and they told me that they had no solution to the portions of the smart scale project. So I would like to be there to provide the input from the last meeting.
Okay. I'll get with Carol, who set up the meeting and have her send you an invite to, I guess, anybody's town. So town emails work for everyone?
Yes. Thank you.
No, they do not. They do not work. Mine does not work. So I don't know. I think they were working on that, but I haven't seen that change yet for the town emails. So I want to make sure everybody does get that email. Am I right, Jackie?
Yes, that's right.
All right. Nobody, anything for the chief? Let's move on to Town Treasurer's Finance and Report. Anybody have anything for Jackie Nance? Jackie, you have anything you'd like to say?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I was just going to say, I did like the format of the, well, I guess that's under the bills, but it still falls under that. For me, it's easier for me to track all those and what they are. So thank you. Instead of, I guess, just the way it was aligned, it helped for me. Thank you.
And we are, we are steadily working on getting our Keystone system in place. And the girls are doing some good training on it. And so keep it up. Thank you. Town Administration Report. Turn it on.
There's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I guess I got one. Yeah, with our upcoming work sessions, are we going to be getting to allocation of the remaining various terms COVID money again?
Yes, the future work sessions, there'll be the allocation of COVID money. And then that's in August. And then in September is, is personnel-related issues with new job descriptions.
All right, that's, that's awesome. Because I'm, you know, with the, with the delays that we had, as far as the Keystone software, I'd, I'd be interested in what the cost of accelerating our own race through to getting all the training as opposed to waiting for the county's training. I don't know how much it was probably going to cost a whole lot, but I'd be interested to know what that would cost so that we could get off of our old system.
I've analyzed it on a case-by-case basis. And the treasurer and I continue to do that and work with Keystone. We are going to move forward with utility billing in October and actually August and September leading up to that. And so we will be on utility billing in October. And then right now, for the remainder of the modules, waiting for the county to go live in the spring. Really, there's a lot of reasons why, but one of them is the cost of sharing, sharing the cost on training with the county. And also, if they are on, still on bright, we receive data from the commissioner and all of that, it just makes more sense for us to be, to go in line with the county.
Sure, for the interactivity compatibility, that makes sense. If you're happy with it, you got a plan, that's great. You know, if you had, had thought that maybe going faster would have been helpful, I would have maybe been, I would have wanted to look at it. But sure, you got a plan.
I'll bring more information to the work session in August on the update. Thank you.
I appreciate your consistency and determination with keeping on track with them as far as doing any minute, as much training as we can by Zoom to help cut, to cut costs.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, moving on to consent agendas. Do I have a motion to accept nine items, five and six?
Mr. Mayor, if we could remove number six due to a correction I have to add or I can pass it on after, but there is something in there. So we wouldn't be able to accept the minutes.
Yeah, same. I had minutes corrections as well. I, I can move to pass number five.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion to accept, it's consent agenda number five. I have a second bar, Arthur, do all, any discussion? No, do I have a, have an aye, please?
Aye.
All in favor, aye? Opposed, nay? All right, unanimous, aye? All right, item number six, do I have a motion to accept item number six? Minutes, town council meeting?
Mr. Mayor, there's some changes that need to be reflected.
Can we get the motion, then we'll go discussion after to accept, to go over it?
I can't make a motion to accept them as presented without the changes.
Yeah, we can, can't we?
You can go ahead and identify the changes and then make a motion to approve them as amended.
Okay. So, okay.
Go ahead and do yours, Arthur.
Okay, I guess for mine, if this was for the June minutes, I just wanted to correct on page two, I did not second the motion due to myself leaving after the work session. So I was not. I don't think that I attended any of the actual meeting. I was here during the work session. So, because I marked absent from the meeting, but then on the next page, it has me seconding a motion. Correct, I stayed till the conclusion of the work session and then when we went into recess before the meeting, I did leave. So I just wanted to clarify, that motion may need to be revisited.
Which one was that? Which, which motion was that?
That's for the defer action on the draft FY23 budget to the June 16th meeting.
It would be important for us to find out who did second.
So who did second it then? Anybody remember?
Jeff, it says you made the motion.
I'm still trying to look up where it is.
It's the second paragraph on the top. We took these minutes from a recorder, so. We took these minutes from a recorder, so it was a little hard.
Well, then I'm gonna say, not to put it out, it may have been you, Randy.
I think I was. I'm trying to remember back. I may have seconded that.
I, I think there was something that you seconded after I.
I thought you were seconding almost everything, weren't you?
I'm just going.
Pretty much.
Well, if we're talking dictation, yeah, I think that would be the most similar voice.
Yeah, that's where I'm going at.
Okay. All right. Oh, yeah, then we flipped on the next vote because then you, you made a motion and I seconded. So, yeah, it's, it's Randy. The other two changes, um, the, I, I think, I think the, um, the minutes should reflect that we, after the, um, motions on the, uh, the Fairmont rezoning, we, we chose to move up, um, the discussion of motion for the Northview project. Um, that's instead listed later in the minutes. So I think, uh, that needs to be reflected. And then lastly, um, in the public comment period, uh, it says that, uh, Mr. Dan Webb spoke. It was not Mr. Dan Webb. It was, uh, Mr. Mike Mans. That's all that I noticed.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Uh, do I have a motion to accept the item number six, the minutes with the, uh, can you get the word out, what the amendments that were made?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we got a first by Jeff, second by Arthur. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Deborah, you got aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right, down to new business, item number seven, application for grant funding for well replacement. This is gonna be by, uh, a motion. What we have is a replacement for an abandoned, abandonment of well number four is required by the groundwater withdrawal permit. Seeking grant funding to assist with any costs incurred in the project. So Josh, you got a little bit, tell us about this grant, please?
Um, so this is the grant that, uh, Deborah had asked about us applying for, um, assistance with drilling a new well, uh, where number four is now and abandoning the old well. Um, so on part of the application, uh, question number five, has the project application been approved by a controlling board, council president, et cetera, of each waterworks that is applying for funding? Uh, then if you go down a little bit, it says if the answer to any question above is no, stop as you are not eligible slash not ready to apply for funds. So I need, uh, council's approval to apply for the grant funding.
Okay.
Can I make that motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr.
I'd like to make the motion to move forward with the grant.
Okay, I got a second by Randy?
I got a question. Uh, it, this is in regards to the proposal that was presented correct to town council a couple of months back for roughly $174,000?
Yes.
Okay, under, understood. I just want, it's the same well.
Yeah, same, same well, same well, yes, sir, yeah.
So we're looking to try to recoup whatever we can from this grant. Is that for the whole replacement or is that just a portion of it?
Um, so the grant will probably cover a portion of it, um, like sampling, abandoning the well, things like that. Um, so we'll get, you know, some funding. It won't cover everything, but it is to, you know, help with that process.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, do a roll call on this. Uh, Deborah?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Arthur?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Uh, Valerie? Jeff?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
All right. Got six, uh, six yeses, vote carries. All right, Jeff, I mean, uh, Josh, we got your work cut out for you. All right, moving on to agenda number eight, scheduled public hearing for the USDA funding of sewer upgrades. Uh, Josh, again? Stay up there.
Um, all right, so this one is, uh, for the sewer project upgrades that was presented, um, it's been a few months now from Dewberry Engineering. Um, they came and spoke and walked it, you know, walked everyone through it. Um, so part of applying with the USDA for, uh, the grant loan package is, um, holding a public hearing of your notice of intent to apply for grant funding, for financial assistance. And that public hearing has to be held within 60 days of any application. So, um, I'm requesting that we schedule a public hearing for the next town council meeting in August.
Okay. All right, I got a motion by, uh, Jeff to, uh, authorize public hearing for the next council meeting in August. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
A second by Gene? Uh, do a roll call, Gene? I'm sorry, open for discussion, excuse me.
You're fine, I.
I gotta hand myself.
I guess my concern with this, I just want to make sure I'm clear on it. If we do move forward with the USDA style, um, funding, I'll, I'll put it that because the prior one that you just had would be a grant where they would provide assistance that we would need to pay back. This would be as a loan, correct? A low interest loan that we already currently have, like for the actual sewer lines. But instead, this is for the proposal that Dewberry did for the wastewater treatment facility, which was roughly 17 to 20 million dollars?
Yeah, so it, um, it came in at a cost of, uh, just under 16 million. Um, that includes the wastewater treatment plant and the sanitary sewer collection, so lift stations, sewer mains. Um, it's actually more like the one that we have now for the water, uh, project. It would be a grant loan package, so typically it's a 70% loan, 30% grant. So depending on the cost, it, so you would get some grant funding and then the rest would be a low interest loan.
I guess my.
I was gonna say this is to replace the water lines, right? You guys keep talking about the sewer. Uh, I know it's part of the sewer system, but, um, it's like what we did three years ago, right? And this is just to replace the water lines?
No, so, um, the water project is separate. That, that's already been approved, uh, approved a few, a few years ago. As far as like the water bank replacement, that's separate. Th- this is for the sewer. Um, if you're talking about the sewer replacement on, I believe it was Milford and Moore, I believe, I, I'll have to go back and look, but that, that was something different. I believe the town had to go to the bank actually for that, if I believe, but.
Josh, could you explain to council if they do receive, uh, if they do go ahead and, um, approve this through the public hearing and then receive that grant, um, whether they have to continue with the project, whether they're obligated?
No, so this, this is just, um, part of the process. It, it's a notice of intent to apply for funding. Um, so if you hold the public hearing, um, and the whole town comes out and says, no, we don't want to apply for this, you know, we'll just continue with what we have and then if something happens, it'll be an emergency. This is just a notice of intent, of intent to apply for financial assistance. Um, this isn't, it, it, like, you're not granting, like, permission to move forward. It's just a notice of intent to apply for funding. Um, you're under no obligation to move forward with it. Uh, like, if you go to the public hearing and, you know, you vote to apply for funding, even after that, you're under no obligation to continue, you know? If the USDA approves funding, you can still say, well, we talked about it, we've thought about it and we still say no.
Understood. I, I just wanted to clarify that because I, I guess, from my concern, uh, we've had citizens that have spoken out about the rates, you know, whether they're new or, or tenure citizens of the town and, um, with the prior USDA grants or, or loans that we've occurred here in the town, I know that, you know, those were needed and yes, it does impact all of us that live here. And while I think that we do have a dated plant, you know, that could use upgrades and we had that study done, I also think that that isn't necessarily a top priority. And I just want to make sure that we're not in carrying extra expenses for the citizens. When I feel we have another pending issue where the water is, where, I mean, I, I agree with this, but at the same time, I just want to make sure that we're not necessarily moving forward on a 15 million dollar project for the sewer plant when I feel like we've got some other things and that's, you know, it, it would increase the capacity, but at the same time, we, we have some left, left there in reserve.
Um, so it wouldn't increase the capacity. It would just be updating the obsolete and out of date equipment that's past its expected life expectancy. Uh, same with the sewer lines that are concrete that are falling apart. Um, so I, I understand like the concerns as far as like rates going up. This is actually to be proactive rather than reactive because if the sewer line fails, then the town has to foot the entire bill versus having a low interest loan already and getting grant funding and it, it seems like it would be a significant amount because they have funding left over.
Okay.
So it, it, it's definitely up to, you know, council to decide. Um, however, it, it's my job to bring it to your attention that if in the future something fails and the sewer line costs $4 million to replace, rather than have a grant loan to pay for it, you're gonna have to foot the entire $4 million through, you know, bank funding, which is gonna be at higher rate. So, but.
And is, is that the Dewberry study, is that replacing all the sewer mains throughout the town?
The ones, the lines that are needed. So that would be all the, the concrete lines that are, that are falling apart. Um, the ones like that have just been replaced on Milford, those would stay, um, it would, you know, fixing the manholes that are brick and mortar, which are, you know, 40, 50 years old.
Understood.
So.
Okay, I, I appreciate it. Thanks for the, the information.
And I can have, um, I can talk with Dewberry again and have them come to the next meeting as well to provide more in-depth, you know, answers and.
I, I mean, I remember. We talked to him earlier.
Their study, the other concern is just that, one, we do move to that stage and, and, and we accept those new, uh, standards with the state, you know, we've got to meet and stay at that level of, um, testing, you know, or whatever else that takes place down there. We're currently, we're kind of in a grandfathered process right now.
So, yeah, testing wouldn't, uh, change. It would stay the same. We would still run the same test. We would only change testing if you increase the capacity, which is not what we're doing. We're just taking the equipment that's there that is past its life expectancy and replacing it so it'll last another, you know, 30, 40 years.
So we wouldn't have to meet any new standards with any type of chemical treatments or anything there?
No, as far as like permit limits, no, they would, they would stay where they're at.
Uh, uh, grandfather on nitrates would stay the same?
A- as long as we don't increase the capacity, it would stay the same. So we would still stay at the 250,000 gallon, um, per day average.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I was misunderstood from the first, uh, I guess, discussion about that where, you know, we, we were discussing that and we were talking about if we didn't make a change and upgrade, that we would have to meet different requirements set forth by the state, but that's.
Yeah, that's what I, you know, that's what I thought too, but
If we increase.
Because I thought we were going to expand our capacity, but that's not what we're doing. Uh, we're just making it more efficient, uh, updating all the old equipment, you know, because that, that stuff's been in there, you know, it costs us a lot of money three years ago to go over that plant and put, put a bunch of new stuff in it as well. We spent a lot of money on that plant to get it updated. And, and we're not done yet. Uh, it, it's, it is at a date and, and I'm not trying to sell this or anything, but I'm just bringing reality to it. It is at a date as long with the lines that are in the ground. They are, been there since who knows when. Uh, so, I mean, you know, like you says, we can, we can go forth with it. Doesn't mean we have to accept it and do it. Uh, but it's something that we can just look at and, you know, if you want to pass this thing for a public hearing, you can apply this and we can have numerous conversations about all this, you know, down the road.
Sure.
So, all right. I, we had a motion, we had a second. Uh, let's do a roll call. Deborah, you okay? You got any questions? You good still?
I'm good.
All right, uh, Deborah, you're, you're first, how you vote? Deborah?
Sorry, um, I, yes, did you, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you now. How's your, uh, what's your vote? Yes or no?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, Arthur?
Yes.
Randy? Valerie? Jeff?
Yes.
Gene? All right, motion carries. Thank you all. All right, now moving on to item number nine. This is what was added on to the agenda at beginning of, uh, the meeting. The resolution to consider Northview rezoning to stay, uh, deferred indefinitely to give us a chance to work together on resolving water issues out there. So, uh, do I have a, how do, do I have a motion to approve this?
Or a motion to put it on the floor even for discussion?
I'll make the motion, put it on the floor for discussion.
Okay, I got a motion, put it on the floor for discussion. Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
I got a second by Deborah. Okay, uh, open for discussion?
So I, I guess, can I just ask, so we just made a motion to put it on the floor to discuss the matter, but not take action?
Don't make no, that don't make no sense to me. I mean, it, we should have a vote to put it on the floor to discuss it then.
Yes, the, the proper procedure is in order for discussion to occur, that a motion be put forward first so that it focuses the discussion. And then following the discussion, there's a vote on the motion either up or down.
So.
Those, and I should, so we should have the motion as, do I have a motion to accept this and then we go into a discussion? Correct?
That's what I was.
Okay, can we, can we scratch that last motion?
Thinking, but.
And I need a, uh, motion to accept the, uh, resolution as it is.
I made a motion to accept it.
All right, yep. Motion by Randy, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I got a second by Deborah. Discussion, please? Here are no discussions?
I can start. I mean, that's fine. I, I just, uh, I mean, I didn't attend the, uh, voting portion of the last meeting, but I was here in attendance with DEQ where I interpreted that there was a um, area around the town here that has been identified, um, to have a problem with water. And I mean, the, the facts are here, so I, I just, I guess I'm kind of concerned that listening and understanding what their presentation stated and then having the PowerPoint and then having older documentation, um, regarding the water concern around this area and east of the 95 corridor that DEQ identified and the same with the Potomac Aquifer, um, that I, I, I'm personally concerned that the town can't even provide the water to the vacant lots that are in town right now without having more growth come in. Um, you, you know, I, I do live here and, you know, do I want to see growth? Sure, you know, if it's done smart, but at the same time, I think that we're trying to, um, make an action on a decision before properly planning and, um, for, for me, uh, my mindset is that if I'm gonna do something, I want to plan it out first and, and have those drawings, whatever they may be, and then act on that and then come back and see, um, you know, was it successful, was it not successful? So I, I feel as a town where we all live and, you know, we got a public works division, we're, we're working with DEQ, we had them come here, we had a concern. Um, you know, granted, we have a, uh, individual here that wants to work with them, but we just, um, understood that there is a problem here and it's probably not gonna get better, um, as we progress forward. So I, I feel as a, as a council, our first method is to, to move forward with the action that we need to get on board with Caroline County and Port Roland, King George for the surface water withdrawal permit out of the Rappahannock River. And, and that's one thing that I've been trying to get accomplished, uh, since January of 21. So, uh, I, I would like to see a letter and commitment from the town, um, for that project. And does that serve, I mean, does that, um, resolve the issue at hand short term? No, it does not. But does it provide an avenue for a solution in a long-term? But does it provide an avenue for a solution in a long-term capacity? Yes, I feel that it does, uh, in combination with King George, Port Roland in the county. I, I, I think we, we all need to go back and, and try to dig up as much information, um, that we have in the past and, and, and try to look at that and, and, and look for facts. Um, I, I mean, because what I took out of the DEQ work session, which I was present is that there's numerous areas around this uh, town limit that is identified, um, as a critical area. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Well, uh, appreciate all that. And going back to the part where about a letter, uh, we've already agreed to send a letter to DEQ. We did send it. It wasn't what they wanted to hear. Uh, now we know what they want to hear in the letter, so that is on the radar. Probably hopefully next week, uh, Allison has already got the information that they need on it and we'll get that letter written up and get it sent out to them to get on with that. Um, and then also there's other, that gives, after that, then that gives us options down the road to be able to talk about how we want to join on with them. You know, as, you know, this water starts getting, you know, looking like it's going to come up out of the river. But to stick with this, um, now this does not say that we are passing anything, but what it also may do is to help us to better communicate with DEQ that we have growth that we want to have in our county, in our, in our area. And to see what DEQ will then come up with as far as our permitting. So we can reapply for a permit. And if we still have a, a project that's on the books, there is a need for water. And so hopefully that'll be enough for them to re, reevaluate and look at our situation. The other thing is, like you said, it's, it's a critical situation is, is what they were saying. So that's a matter of their opinion. My, my matter of opinion is if it was a critical, then why do they never come to us way ahead of time and inform us that we were critical or getting critical, you know? So to me, it's kind of a hit and run type deal. I don't know what game they're playing. It may be real. I, I, I don't know. I'm not totally a hundred percent on DEQ, uh, you know, for those reasons. But I think it will help out, especially with them helping us to try to solve or come up with ways to make growth happen. Like I said, it doesn't say we got to do anything, but you know, it's just, it's just there. It's.
Um, can I say something? Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Deborah, sorry.
Um, Arthur, I don't know if you were there when they mentioned a water management plan for the town.
Say it again.
Um, were, because, um, Allison, Allison, have you had any luck with, um, making some contacts for our water management plan to start that process? Because I think everyone agreed that is something we need to be doing to help resolve these issues. And the main reason that I feel it's important to at least be open and reconsider whatever, um, Northview can offer to help us look in those directions. Um, because I, I'll be honest, the water is still my main concern and I agree with you, Arthur, that, um, I'm hoping and, um, was told that there may be more, there's a lot more information out there that will help us, um, figure out what that plan should look like because we need the water management plan for our town that I think will help all of us and all the other, um, prospects of growth that we have. Um, have we had any luck with looking at that?
I was going to give the information under, um, informational items next, but I can speak a little bit and then, okay. Um, so what's occurred since the last meeting is that, um, there, there is a water plan that was adopted in two thousand and eleven. It was written by Webb and Associates. That plan was a requirement of the state for all localities in the state, um, to, because water is an issue and continues to be more and more of an issue. That needs to be reviewed and may answer several questions that we have. Uh, I am trying to do this in the least expensive manner and in the most, um, expedient manner. Um, and so the first step for us was to do a build out analysis. Um, that build out analysis of how much water we really need and, and it includes, um, these two, two proposals, um, as well as all the, uh, underdeveloped and undeveloped properties in the town. With that build out analysis, I can respond then to the, um, to the water withdrawal permit, the joint water withdrawal permit. And so that letter will be sent and, um, and so we can, uh, we can move forward with that project. That's a, that project is going to take many years. Um, so that deals with the surface water. Then there's the groundwater. And the idea is to go ahead and apply for a permit again with that build out analysis, um, for, uh, make an application to DEQ, uh, for, uh, water. The, the next thing though is that we have the build out analysis. Um, I've been working with Jeff Voight on that and he has more information on that. We have the build out analysis figures. Um, so we have started the process, but one of the most critical pieces in this is, is to update the comprehensive plan. Because until you update the comprehensive plan, we don't know, i- if we get a certain amount of water, we know water is going to cost a certain amount of money. Then that really all needs to be calculated into the comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan doesn't, um, doesn't speak to that. It actually, the numbers need to be updated. Um, so that's critical because in front of you are applications, or they were, applications for, um, taking parcels and making them the highest density residential that the town has. Um, all that being said, so we are continuing to work on that. Um, I, I do have assistance from council members, as I said. Um, and now we've been offered assistance from, uh, from, uh, from at least Northview. I can tell you that Anne Neil Cosby is, um, is an expert in land use. She teaches land use planning to, um, to zoning administrators and, um, planners throughout the state. Um, she's done that for years and she is, um, so she's extremely knowledgeable. I can give you an example when I worked in Louisa County, um, of a situation where she was representing Dominion and, and I, uh, working with her, I received unprecedented, um, uh, conditions for a project, um, that no, and it was a, um, it was a solar facility and, and no one else had received that. So I know that she is the type of person, a type of attorney that, that approaches things from a win-win perspective. Um, so accepting assistance, um, it, I, I would gladly accept assistance to a certain degree and, um, and so I just wanted to make sure that you understood that. Now, the perspective though is a little different because what I'm looking at is, um, water for those underdeveloped and undeveloped parcels as well as these proposed projects. Um, so, and also in the comprehensive plan, um, again, I've worked with Anne Neil Cosby on comprehensive plans, but in the comprehensive plan where the town chooses to have that density, um, may be different than what her client is, um, what they want, which is the higher density out on Route three oh one. So, um, with that, I just, that's, that's what I have so far. Mr. Voight is going to give you an update on, on what we found for the build out, I believe.
Is that something that I should do now? I'll take that as a go ahead. All right. I was working with Allison over the last week to try to compile some data. Uh, it did take me until this afternoon. And actually I was still kind of working on, uh, some of it as the first work session started. So I apologize for not having a bunch of stuff printed out for everybody. Um, what I did was I took some of our old parcel data from, from, uh, some tax sheets that we had. Everything was in image format. So everything had to be retyped by hand. Um, I put it into a new database, uh, added some, uh, data columns to it for better tracking and verified everything off the county's GIS system afterwards. Uh, so what I have is I have a list of every parcel in the town, uh, with their zoning, their acreage, a couple other data points. Um, and once, uh, that was compiled, um, I, I went back and checked with Allison and, and we discussed what all of the, um, potential by right subdivision, um, rules we had in town based of, of our code. And so then I took every parcel and I applied the math, um, based off that. And I, I was a little conservative with all of, of the data points, uh, so that I, I, I gave you room for error. Um, so, you know, where is, where is a, uh, a plot? So like, like A1, um, requires, uh, three acre minimum lots to be made. Uh, you might think at first, okay, if I have six acres, I can divide that into, well, no, you can't. You gotta leave some leftover room for infrastructure and street and, uh, ingres agres. Uh, so I, I made those numbers a little bit higher. Um, so they're all fairly legit. Now bear in mind that this is going by, um, town and county data. So there is a little margin of error in there as well. Uh, these things, um, only go so recent. Uh, so there might be a couple, um, small lots, medium, big lots that may have been subdivided since the GIS was updated. Um, my house, uh, that I bought seven years ago was, was properly updated, but, uh, somebody's that was bought a year ago was not that I noticed. But I don't know everybody, so I can't speak for all of it. Um, that said, I can quote you some numbers and you're probably not even going to believe them. Uh, but I can prove them. Let me go back. So one of the things I do want to stress though is an understanding that we all have of what by right means for this, in this regard. Um, anyone and, and our, our code might be, we might want to take a look at that and maybe make it a little bit more strict because we don't have a whole lot of, um, restriction in place for someone that wants to do a by right, uh, subdivision. Basically, if your lot meets the size, then you can, uh, go to these minimums. Um, most of the large developments that we get are wrapped up in rezonings where they go from say a, a large A1 that would otherwise require three acre minimums down to, uh, say an R three thing so that they can put a bunch of townhomes on it or something. Um, the developments that we've been talking about recently were, um, combining some commercial plots with, uh, low density residential and then trying to go to a higher density at that point. So that requires the council to approve. By right usage does not. The only requirements are that they adhere to the code that we have. So as long, they still have to submit a site plan, but if they says like, no, this is my entrance here and that's the code. The house goes here, that's the code. You don't get a denial. They just automatically get it as long as they follow the rules and policies that we already have in place. It doesn't come before us to give a no decision if we don't like that growth. And that's the problem that we, we have at, at this point. Um, so to just talk about our developed land, um, and let me pause there. Deborah, did, did you like happen to have like a, a piece of paper and a pencil?
Um, yes, I do.
Okay, that, that's, that's really good. Um, to communicate a little bit better, I think I'll, I'll probably try to round to the nearest thousand when I'm quoting some of these numbers, but I'll, I'll send you this thing soon. Um, so when we talk about developed land, um, that is anything with a structure on it. But that it, I, I just want to be clear and fair that in certain situations, it doesn't necessarily mean that it is being used at this moment. I'll, I'll give an example where the Pizza Hut used to be. That's still a developed plot. Um, so in this list I'm about to give you, that is considered developed. Uh, any business that's vacant is, it's not a vacant, undeveloped, underdeveloped parcel. We'll get to those in a minute. So the developed land, we have, um, five hundred and seven residential plots. Um, now that's counting the Maury Heights plots. Now those we serve water for, they're outside of town limits. Um, we have, I don't need to tell you all the different parcel numbers, but, um, let me take a second to talk about the definitions that we're going to be using for water usage here. Cause this is, is rather important because there is something, there are some that like to dispute how this is done. But, um, some of the, what you could call industry standards used for these calculations, um, for a residential plat, three hundred gallons a day. That's like the normal one that gets used and thrown around. Uh, so when you have a connection, that's how they, they do the, the foresight planning for. You don't necessarily use that. And we can look at our actual use and it is lower than that on average. Uh, that doesn't account for peak usage, which can go way above three hundred. But anyway, for, for the purpose of this, we are using the standard three hundred gallons for all residential connections. Uh, when it comes to commercial, um, that's where basically I had to pick a number. Um, so I want to again be clear and fair for everybody listening that something like an office, a retail shop, they use very little. You know, that, that can be as low as fifty gallons a day. However, something restaurants use a lot more than that. Uh, restaurants can use seven, eight, nine hundred a day very easily. Uh, some of these things are kind of based off the square footage of the place. Um, but yeah, uh, the interesting thing with commercial lots is how you'll get multiple connections on an individual lot because of having multiple businesses. And you look at our main street, there, there's, you know, the way that those buildings are laid out, some of them are on individual lots. Um, so with that in mind, the, I just went ahead and I applied the same three hundred gallons per day for the business connections. You know, with, with this assumption that that's, it's fairly in the middle, um, because you can't, if we're talking about future planning, you don't know what you're going to get. Car wash will use extensively more. If you get a bunch of sit down restaurants, they'll use extensively more. If you get only banks, well, then you're not getting much use and you're getting extra bank stock tax. That would be great, but you don't know what you're going to get. So something a little bit in the middle there is what was used for this document. Okay, that I think is enough of the background. So in taking all of our developed land, bearing in mind how I described how that's defined, that is going to put us at around a hundred and eighty-four thousand gallons per day. Fortunately, our actual use is below that. Some of that is because we have empty buildings. So they're not actually being used right now. Some of that is, um, because of, we do have a lot of office type business, which is not using much of anything. Um, our actual usage is more around one seventy from the last DEQ that I, DEQ report that I looked at. They have not done a report this year yet, so their most recent one is a twenty twenty-one report. Um, we have had, uh, hits around one sixty-eight, one sixty-nine, one seventy-one. So that is developed land. Now if I talk now for a minute by about undeveloped land, now undeveloped or underdeveloped land is going to be, you know, your vacant land. So your, your empty lots that are sitting out there. But in addition to those, again, to be fair, a parking lot is usually considered a vacant or underdeveloped plot. Um, so I, um, to clarify this. So I, to clarify this, we'll talk about the funeral home, Stork's Funeral. The, both of them are zoned commercial. There's two plots. There's one that makes up the building, and there's one that makes up the parking lot. This is a really easy one to explain. So the, the actual funeral home is considered developed. The parking lot is considered undeveloped. Now, a, a common thing to rebuke a lot of this with is, well, we know that's never gonna get developed. Well, we really don't. You know, you could change your mind and, and sell, you know. I, I know in the case of him, he's got multiple funerals. But, you know, something would happen, and a change could be done. Because that has already zoned what it is, you know, another business could come in. In order to subdivide a business, all you have to do is basically have a site plan that shows you have parking for that business. So that one vacant lot and one developed lot could be transformed into, the minimum size for a business is actually quite small. You could put 10 little mini businesses on there. You know, the one, the, the two, two level building we have out there could, could hold 10 businesses inside of it, each one of them with potential connection. Now, again, yeah, you could maybe assume that most of that would be office or retail, but you don't know. And there are certain, that's zone B1, we have a list of B1 uses. Sure, car wash isn't one of them on Sondra B1, so we don't have to worry about that. But there are other uses that could use very high. So that empty lot there, just on the corner, could end up producing another eight connections very easily. And just assuming that it would never get developed is not really the best judgment to try to do your 20, 30 year planning. So that said, our undeveloped land, if we only were to assume a single connection, is another 50,000 gallons a day. And that if is added to the, the first is gonna bring us up to 199,000 a day. So with that said, I would bring your attention to our current withdrawal permit, which is 190,000 a day. So before we even talk any subdivision, future planning is already above it. And we don't exactly have, all of those uses are already by right. Somebody could come in any vacant lot and build on it, whether it's a business or a residence, it's already zoned. They can come in and build on that lot according to its specs, and they by right get a water connection. That's before any talk about subdividing. They're entitled to it. And that already is over our withdrawal permit. So that is our biggest problem in this town right now. To take it further, now we'll talk about subdivisions.
Can, can you kind of give us a short version on it? Please?
I think some would agree this is one of the more important things we have, but yeah, we're almost done.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine to listen.
No, I'm fine too, but it's, you know.
Because I'd, I'd like to speak after.
There's 161 total vacant lots. And of those, there's 90, you know, I'll just round it out to 90 that can be subdivided. That's split between the business and the resident. Most of them are residential. And the bad news there is by right, I'll just go straight to the number, 263,000 more gallons a day. That, added back to the original existing developed land, is 468,000 gallons a day. And again, that is including the Maury Heights area. And I said earlier that some of this data might be a little bit older. And in saying that, if it's missing anything, that means it's missing something, which means that the number would be higher. So any error is actually worse news. And that's about where we are. The, these projects that were here, I'll give you the, the rough. It was, Allison, it was 183 total between, well, just give me one of them. 90, 90 lots. Okay. That should be easy math, but my brain is a little fried at this point. That's another 27,000 gallons. However, any, anything that the council would move is going in addition to all the stuff that we're already legally obligated to provide. So adding more for us to be obligated to do is what's at question. But as far as data points, I think I should yield the floor, because I think I, I finished there, so I'll get back to discussion at a later time.
That was very informational, very, very good. Arthur, I, you said you wanted to?
I, I did, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I did just want to kind of, I had a question for our attorney in regards to what Jeff had just said. Is, is there any legal repercussions on the town for approving buildable lots without having adequate water source?
So, you know, we, we live in a litigious society, and people can and will always sue you for anything. I'm not aware of case law that places liability on behalf of a locality for the inability to provide infrastructure and services for its citizens or for development that has been previously approved. That being said, somebody always could make that argument. I think a more pressing concern is the pressure from the people who live in the town of Bowling Green, who will spend a significant portion of their savings to purchase something or to develop something, and then only to find out that there are huge obstacles.
Understood. And just to provide some facts in regards to what Jeff had just given, I'm almost gonna think that the numbers that he got were a little conservative here, because he said 507 for the development. And I have a, a document stating back from 2016, so this was done in 2016, that in the town, we had, for water connections, commercial, we had 97 out of town, we had two on our system. Residential, we had 498 in town, and out of town, we had 260. So that's a total of 857 water connections. So that was prior to the Maury Heights build out, which that capacity has already been reserved by that builder. So you're looking at 857 connections. And if you take that and times that by the 300, that's including commercial and residential. So if you do 857 times 300, you're at, oh, I'm sorry. It's at 257,000 gallons. So I can say that somewhere within the last 10 years, we peaked right at or at or around 200,000 gallons for that day. So even though we're just saying that, hey, you know, on average, we're 150 to 175,000 gallons a day for usage, you, you gotta have that reserve in there for those hot days where more water demands there. And then, you know, if there was happened to be an emergency incident, you gotta have that capacity on hand to, to meet that threshold for that demand that may be needed. So I, I, I think there's a, a lot of consideration. I know I've got some documentation. Granted, it's six years old, but it's fairly concerning for, for me, which I'll share to anybody.
Can I do a follow up question for, for you, Andrea? So no cases of anybody suing for being told no that a locality, let me, let me rephrase. If a locality is at their withdrawal limit, okay. And then somebody then chooses to move into that locality onto a lot that, you know, by its very nature, any, any lot that they move on to should therefore be entitled to water. That would then put the locality staff in the dilemma of either saying, yes, we'll get you water, and then they'd be in violation of the withdrawal permit, or they would then have to say, no, we won't connect you, which at that point, I would assume would open up to a li, a, a liability issue for that person to be like, well, I just bought this house. I'm entitled to water. What are you gonna do about it?
And again, I mean, you know, people can and will sue for anything. I'm not aware of an affirmative obligation. I, I think that if somebody purchased a connection and then didn't get water, you have a, a basis for more legal liability. But I'm not aware of an affirmative basis for a locality to provide water and sewer. That being said, if you can't provide water and sewer, there are still additional problems for the locality, because what if that person wants to dig a well? Or what if that person wants to have a, a septic field? I mean, they have to have those things in order to live on the lot. So in saying that, that there's no affirmative obligation to provide water, I'm not trying to downplay the seriousness. It, it's extremely, extremely important. And it is something that the council needs to be mindful of, because to put citizens or businesses in the position, like I said, where they make a, a substantial investment and then cannot use the property for the intended purchase or for the, for the reason for which it was purchased, is going to have a very detrimental effect on the town.
Yeah, I'm building on that. We do, in our ordinances, see, ordinances or charters, I guess both. We do have, in, in certain spots in there, we have not only a requirement for citizens to get onto the water system, but then within that requirement, it's, you know, one of those like, the town shall provide the connection. It's, it's insider ordinance for, it's something like, you know, for any residence that's, you know, off the street within 100 feet or something like that. I, do you remember any of that text a little better than me?
I think it's 150 feet. Isn't that what it read? You're within 150 foot of water, that you had to draw in water, I think.
If, if it's within our lines of a certain distance, we will provide it, basically.
Right, there's not a requirement in our code for water. For sewer, there is.
Oh, it's only sewer? Okay. Interesting.
I believe it's 300 feet, I think.
All right. I thought I remembered something else, but okay.
But also, if you, if you plat lots that are a certain size, then you have to connect to water and sewer. So it's 12,000 square feet, and then you have to connect to water and sewer. If you don't connect to one, then it goes up to, I believe, 16,000 in R1, maybe R2 and R3. I can look it up, but it, it, you have to have larger lots if you don't connect.
And this is also for all, all the potential new lots, you know. I suppose there could be another accounting of, of this, but many of the lots already established in town do have those rights. So. You know, because again, going back to, you know, say, the, the Pizza Hut, like, it already has a connection. It's entitled to its connection, but, you know, things along Main Street and whatnot.
Okay.
Well, certainly, if you can't, I mean, there's a problem, like, if, there's still a problem. You need either a well or public water, so.
I, I guess, I guess a question for you, Jeff, in your numbers that you found. You look strictly at the Bowling Green town corporate limits, correct? Because I think some of the.
Yes, yeah, there is more outside. I only went with Maury Heights. And in fact, the data, some of the data that I had was a little bit older, and it did not properly reflect, say, the Mobile Home Park. So I had to go and investigate the Mobile Home Park, because I knew where that was. But there were, there were a couple other questions that I, I researched. So when I asked about, say, School Road, that was a no. Apparently, we don't provide them water. That's next to Maury Heights. But I am sure there are more lots that I missed outside.
I think Josh may know where the system stops, but isn't it up Route 2 North, just a little north of Farmer Drive in the county? So all those county residents are on the town's water system? Correct?
So, yeah.
I, I mean, I just, I don't know where that cutoff is. I know it's right there north of Farmer Drive, past the VDOT.
Yeah, if I could get a, a map boundary, I could add all that in.
I, I want to make sure that we, as a council, understand that there are multiple county connections on our water system currently. And then there are more county connections pending currently right now that have been reserved on buildable lots out of our water system.
So anything outside of town limits, they would have to go to the county first. They would have to get permission from the board of supervisors there, then to come to y'all to ask for permission to connect to the system. I believe Maury Heights had already got that permission from the board supervisor, then got the permission from town council. So once it became a development, it was the town's responsibility to provide that water. But any lot outside of town limits has to go to the county first.
So they're going up north. There was, my understanding from the Director of Community Development in the county is that going up north to where you're talking about, I think this is exactly what you're talking about, is what, is the wells were contaminated. And so there was some agreement, VDOT paid. There's some agreement with the town. Something's going on where, where providing water all the way up to where you're talking about was, there's something, I need to go find it, but.
I guess the, the second part, that was the first part. The second part is, there currently is X amount reserved capacity for the rest of the lots in Maury Heights, which are town residents out of our system. Correct? I mean, I don't know what that is. Is it 70? Is it 100? I, I don't know. It could be 7. I, I mean, I, I don't know how many are actually connected at this point.
So they're pretty much almost finished. There was, they paid for 69 lots, which is the finishing Maury Heights. So they're almost finished building.
So they may all be connected, but they're not in use, per se?
Not yet by residents, not yet. Do you know how many total it is, Josh? For the new section of Maury Heights altogether? For the town? No, no, Maury Heights, just Maury Heights altogether. Both sections? I'd, I'd have to go back and look.
So roughly 70 in the newer, though?
No, there's, there's more than 70 in the newer home. That was just, they reserved 69, because that, that was what was left. I believe there was like, maybe 20 or so already in there that were already built. And then the builder came in and bought the rest of the lots, and they started building their homes. When did they start building those? I was.
It's, it's been a few years. I'd say almost close to 10 years ago.
Okay, then they were probably on them. Yeah, the ol, the older ones were already on there from. Yeah, the, the homes that were already built, I believe it was around 2005, 2006, they were, they had started and built those. And then these had just started within the last, you know, two years.
Thank you, Josh. All right. Anybody else before we call for a vote?
I'm not gonna have any more discussion, no questions? Okay, I'll keep going. Yeah, I'll say I do, like, we never, in this process, really had much discussion. So I guess it's good that we finally are, even though it's really only about this one water subject. Okay, so I, I, I think obviously we all know where I'm coming from here, but I just wanted to say that I don't like the idea of using the projects as fuel to change the things that we need to change in town. I like separating those things, because I don't want to make any changes for the sake of any projects, and I don't want to give any illusion that we are, because we have a problem either way. These projects. These projects, you know, would add thousands more to the totals that I already quoted you. And that said, there, there's, there's two major points that I would wanna make regarding this particular issue, as far as this resolution. The first one is the cost to taxpayers. Each time that this thing has come up at that public hearing, it's needed to be advertised. And the only time that the applicant pays for it is the first time. We've had several continuals, deferrals, and each time we've had to re-advertise, it's been on the town's purse for that. It's not a whole lot, it's a couple hundred dollars, but it's been adding up. And to defer it more would basically do the same thing. As a bigger point, we know that we have a big issue. Whether you believe these numbers, that I could break down and show you, I have a full spreadsheet and everything, and I'll, I'll get it printed and compiled and sent out to everybody. Our committed, our allocated committed use already is over double what our permit is. Anything that we have to do to fix that, because DEQ is not going to give us a doubled permit, they, they were here. You know, we watched, Arthur was here for almost all of it, all, all the same stuff, we, we, we have the materials. That is just not within the scope of what they'll be able to do. We're gonna need to have a more in-depth water plan where we try to offset that, or some other very expensive things that I'll get into another day. But regardless of what we do, it is going to be a substantial change, and we need to do those changes. But those changes are gonna change the makeup of this town. Anything that happens, even something that they were to come in and say that they were gonna do, you know, they, they could bring a billion dollars in and, and put some fancy reservoir out there. That is a fancy substantial change, no matter what we do, is, is gonna be that big. Any of these projects, they might wanna come back with the same project, but the town's not gonna be the same. Regardless, the town's not gonna be the same, they could have come back with a different project. My point in saying that is that we could split hairs on the term substantial change, cause it has a meaning legally. It, it, it needs to go back to the beginning, it needs to go back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission needs to be part of these changes. They have a voice, it's what they're for. As Allison said, our entire comprehensive plan needs to change fundamentally, because these things apparently, you know, they just weren't known before. You know, this, this build-out thing, I mean, you know, I'll just say it, it should've been done a while ago. You know, that's not, it's no, no pointing fingers, not to fault of council, it's not to fault of staff. You know, we know there's a problem now, we need to fix it. And if we don't fix it, that's when we point the fingers. Going and putting this on an indefinite deferral, that doesn't mean that they can't work towards something. Now, I know, based off of my beliefs, so I'll just say I believe, that these projects, this project, is gonna need to have a lot of changes to it. I don't think it's gonna meet the metric of just the same thing that it was. You know, something as, as simple as, okay, they'll dig their own well, well, that needs to, they need to change all their lots. That's substantial. We don't have a recommendation from the Planning Commission on how to treat that. That's what their job is, needs to go back there. So I don't see the need for this kinda thing. We, we don't need to give them an okay, we might say yes later, will you please work with us now? At, at no point did any of us wanna be like, no, we wanna shut down the growth out there. What we all are thinking is, hey, we need to fix this problem so that we can grow out there, if we can grow out there. Further, I don't even wanna waste anybody's time. A, a, as I said, these numbers are over twice what our limit is. I mean, the, the, the chances are, DEQ's gonna come back and be like, no, you can't. You know, fortunately, we have a, a 20-year solution in the surface water deal, and by then, we can just buy water from the river, from the county. Great. I mean, I'd love to be able to fix something in the meantime, but that may not be in the cards. So I just don't want to, to leave this thing hanging, and every single thing that comes before us is now in the shadow of this thing that we sorta okayed, but didn't really okay, cause we're gonna get little things in the meantime. You know, somebody that, that wants to change their, like, you know, bordering house, you know, and they'll, they'll be like, well, it's in the comp plan, you know, I can subdivide over here and rezone this thing, it's only two lots, can I do that? And then we'll have this thing on our record, like, well, you know, we're waiting to see what we do with this. I don't even feel that's fair to either of those in that situation, cause what if we get 100 of them? So that, that's where I'm at, I, I think that's all my notes, and I've talked enough, so y'all have at it.
Go for a roll call vote. Deborah?
Um, I'm still saying yes, mainly because I feel, I just wanna say that I feel like to keep the conversations going on both sides is very important, and having some resolve to the water issue, and I don't, and that's, to me, the biggest concern. So I say yes, that we should, we should still give another opportunity.
All right, Arthur?
No.
Randy?
I say yes, because we got, they got somebody hired here that's gonna try helping us resolve the issue.
Okay.
We need to take advantage of it, so my answer is yes.
Valerie?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Gene? All right, that's four noes, two yeses, motion doesn't carry. I assign him on the agenda is a motion to adjourn. You got a motion by Jeff? Do I have a second? Second by Gene. All the favorites say aye.
Arthur had discussion.
But when, I believe you skipped informational items in committee reports, unless there are none.
That, that needs to come off.
Okay.
Well, no, well, we'll keep it on, just in case we have a special committee.
I, I didn't know if Allison had anything else at that point. I'm sorry, I, I just saw it on there, I just wanted to make sure, sorry.
Thank you, sir. So, all the favorites say aye. Deborah? She's already gone. Meeting adjourned, folks.